Six o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee.
Here.
Trustee Laughlin.
Here.
Clerk Plavich here, Treasurer Larry Summers.
Here.
Trustee Kroll.
Here.
Trustee Ryder.
Here.
Supervisor Piszewski.
Here. The afternoon of the agenda. Are you going to motion?
Motion to accept.
Motion for. Oh, okay. Uh, all those in favor adopting the agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close the same. Motion carried. This is the first opportunity for public comment. If you are online with public comment, please. Hit the ellipsis, raise your hand. Seeing none, if there's anybody in the audience with public comment, please approach the podium.
Public comment, anything or are you doing public comment for the planning commission case as well?
Um, anything that's on the agenda.
I'm sorry.
Anything that's on the agenda. Um, give me one second, Otis, just start a timer for you.
Thank you. So I'm Rachel Smolinski, fifteen fifty Greenhaven Lane. I'm here to speak in opposition of the um, case, planning commission case related to twelve forty-five. Greenhaven Lane, um, the conditional rezoning. Um, I'm not going to reread my letter or read my letter. I think you all have a copy of that. Um, but I did want to make a couple of points, um, and I just reiterate everything that's in my letter. Um, I also wanted to note the um, rezoning standards and um, some of those standards. According to your planning consultant are are not met, but I also wanted, and I. Um, outlined that in my letter as well. And then I also wanted to know under your um. Rezoning standards that that, you know, these are. Standards to consider, but you can also consider other standards because it says but are not limited to. So I did want to also um, highlight the. Comments that I made related to wetlands and that entire wetland system. Um, so I think that's all I wanted to note, um, but just wanted to. Restate my opposition to this rezoning request. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm gonna be coughing like that all night, so I'm just, sorry. Uh, was there any other public comment? Seeing none. Consent agenda, I have a motion to. Acceptance by the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Support. Uh, any other discussion?
The only discussion I had was, are they asking us to uh, under correspondence from P I E N G. To appoint a liaison from this board to be. Going to these meetings? I didn't quite get that.
I think they're just offering it up to us as an opportunity for somebody to go if we would like to go.
Okay, that's all it really boiled down to, because I, the liaison part threw me a little, so, alright.
No, I think there's asking, saying like, hey, you can come to this, alright, so choose. So. Any other, like, are you volunteering to go? That's what I heard.
Are we, are I having, uh, attending or?
Do I get triple mileage?
I asked, I, do you want to go?
No, I don't want to go, but.
I was not.
Okay.
I am. While I'm telling anybody that I had to go.
You know, really thought.
I probably, I probably won't, was maybe, the strong maybe, but um. Yeah, stayed interested. I, I asked him, but he seemed like he wasn't interested.
No, I'm not interested. Thank you for asking, though.
You're welcome. Uh, any other discussion? Was in favor of accepting the consent. Thanks. Roll call.
Clerk Plavich, yeah. Treasurer Larry Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Ryder.
Yes.
Trustee Pauli.
Yes.
Trustee Laven.
Yes.
Supervisor Piszewski.
Yes, motion carried, I have. Sorry. Um, moving on to old business, the first agenda item on here is the Maple Ridge Township Agreement for the Fire Department. Um, there hasn't been any further discussion on that. So, um, I'd like to make a motion to table that to the next meeting. Oh, I'll support that. Thank you. Any discussion?
Alright. Um, I have discussion.
Sure.
Um, I do want, I just wanted the board to be aware that since there is no agreement in place, they have not been billed for this fiscal year. So. Just want the board to know that.
What, what's the fiscal year for them, for us?
Well, April first to March thirty-first, but since there is no agreement. They had a bill ready to send to them for thirty-five hundred, but the board never approved that. So, just so everybody's aware, but he wants an agreement.
So we should.
It's decided.
But there, there seems to be some issue in regards to whether that's a no, yeah.
Right, right.
Well, it'll be finalized for next meeting.
Yeah. I, I think I gave you guys my opinion on it at the last meeting.
But there has, I would think there did be meetings set up with.
Yes, and then she'd have a town radio, so when he gets back, I'd be happy to.
But he wouldn't necessarily be totally involved in the contract negotiations with that, would he?
No, but he did sit in on the initial contract, well, this. The thirty-five hundred dollar contract agreement, he did sit in on that with their clerk as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
If you need any um, financial figures, let me um, figure out the cost.
I mean, should, um, the fire committee?
Well, that was, Steve was going to try to analyze the cost of doing business. So.
Yeah, so there hasn't been any um. Progress brought to me on that as far as cost of doing business, which is why I'm. Suggesting me to.
Okay.
But should a fire committee member also be included in that, just to kind of move it along and there's gonna be.
Or can you have conversation with them, call them and see what the status is?
I mean, next month's already November.
Yeah.
You have me there.
Not right now, but.
I'll probably wait till he gets back from his vacation. It's midnight right now.
Yeah, it's not.
Is there any other discussions?
No.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor of tabling the Maple Ridge Township Fire Agreement for the next meeting, if you signify by saying aye. Uh, close the same, motion carried. Um, number, letter B is the water tower security update. Uh, Michelle and I had a conversation with Corey from American Witches. Something um, about how to proceed with that. Um, so we're looking into some internet options right now, based on his.
Corey suggested we determine what.
We need some specs.
What internet we're going to use, and that will let him know. What he needs to do on his.
Oh, okay. He gave us a little bit more insight about what could work for his. Cameras.
Yeah.
So he's gonna look into different internet.
Alright, well, good.
So, are we just? That's just an update.
Um, moving on to new business. Number one is the twenty-four, twenty-five audit. Chelsea, if you'd like to take the podium?
Good evening, I'm Chelsea McConnell from Straley Lamp and Cransign, and I'm here to present your fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five audit. So a few things that we're gonna go over, we're going to go over the audited financial statement, opinion, significant risks, some required communications, analytics, and the internal control communication. So first, the audited financial statements, so just a couple of things, so for an auditor to be able to perform an audit under generally accepted auditing standards, we have to be independent of the audit. And we also use a concept called materiality, and so materiality really put into simple terms is, you know, what's. What could be large enough or significant enough that could potentially influence the financial statement user's decisions and looking at those financial statements, or what could be misleading? So it's a calculation we prepare, and although it's, it is a threshold and a number, there could be something under that number that could still meet those qualifications where it could be. Make the financial statements misleading, and then we would propose an adjustment in that area. So I am pleased to say that overall, other than with the enterprise fund and business type activities, which is the Water and Sewer Fund, you were issued a unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. And of course, we know that in that fit, those business type activities in the Water and Sewer Fund. We have been qualifying the opinion for a number of years due to the capital assets, so what a qualified opinion really means is that, you know. We don't really know the effect that those capital assets could have on the statements, you know, maybe it's not material, but since we just don't know because we couldn't get that historical. Capital asset listing for those funds, originally, I think back in twenty seventeen, you know, we've been qualifying the opinion in that area. I also always like to point out that you have something called required supplementary information or RSI within your report, and that is your budgetary comparison schedules and your management discussion and analysis. And we don't issue an opinion on those areas because we only perform limited procedures in that area. So some of the significant risks in this year's audit was management's override of controls, revenue recognition. The estimated contingent liability in the Water and Sewer Fund for the ongoing litigation, and then proposed material audit adjustments and just assisting in the closing area. So management overriding of controls and revenue recognition, we actually have auditing standards that say, you know, those are going to be high risk, significant risk areas, so it's very rare that you ever see those not become a significant risk area. And so, you know, what we have to do when we have significant risk areas is we need to gather more audit evidence. For our opinion to be able to provide us a sufficient basis for, to give that opinion to you. So if you think about, you know, your system of internal controls and where maybe those controls could be overridden, usually it's in that management. Area, so what we do is we select a sample of transactions and journal entries, and then we walk through that sample. If we find that, you know, there's deviations from the system of internal controls, then we would, you know. Look further, maybe expand our sample, say, you know, are we finding more, are they following their system of internal controls? Or are they being overridden in the management area or another area? But I am pleased to say we didn't find any deviations in, within our sample during the audit. And of course, the contingent liability in the Water and Sewer Fund, that's really a significant estimate, and it's, it's material, and so it just kind of lands in this significant risk area as well. So next, the required communication, so you're, you would have a loose leaf letter tucked within the bound reports. That's titled Communication With Those Charged With Governance, which is you, the board. And so this is a required communication between the auditor and the board. And so just a couple of key areas that I like to talk about within this communication is, you know. There's, if there's any new policies that were adopted, you'll find them in this letter, so this year we did implement GASP statement number one oh one, compensated absences. And so this criteria changed from the old standard, now it, anything that was attributed attributable to services already rendered, it accumulates. And it's also more likely than not to be paid or used as time off. Um, you would now, you know, accrue that as a liability. So overall, there wasn't a material impact, so you won't see a restatement within your statements, just because it was so insignificant, it just got ran through the current year, but. I still wanted everyone to be aware of that standard changing. In addition, there are some significant estimates listed within this letter. So again, like I said, you'll find that potential claim regarding the litigation in the Water Sewer Fund listed here. You also have estimated useful life of depreciable assets, so, you know, we capitalize those assets and then depreciate them over that estimated useful life. And the compensated absence liability as well. I am pleased to report that we didn't have any difficulties in performing our audit, nor did we have any disagreements with management during the course of our audit. This letter also discusses audit adjustments, so there were proposed audit adjustments, and they were material to the statements, however. We did not have any uncorrected misstatement, or uncorrected adjustments at year end, and management reviewed and approved all of those adjustments, and they are all reflected within these financial statements. In addition, we require management to make different representations in regards to the audit. And so one thing auditors are is we're skeptical by nature, and you know, we have something called professional skepticism that we have to go by, so. We actually write this letter for management, and then we provide to management, ask them to review and sign it and return it to us once signed. We didn't have any consultations with other auditors during the course of our audit. And then at the end of this letter, you'll find some recent pronouncements that are coming down the pipeline from GASP as well. So next, we're going to look at just a summarized comparative statement of net position to see kind of what changed between twenty-four and twenty-five. And so this is your government-wide statement, where we're on the full accrual basis of accounting, where we have all the debt, all the capital assets, everything like that accrued. So overall, there was an increase in assets of about two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, that was mainly due to an increase in capital assets. Of about three hun, just under three hundred and eighty-three thousand, so there was the pumper truck that was purchased in twenty-four, twenty-five, which was about four hundred and fifty thousand, and that was the majority of those asset additions. In addition, there was a decrease in current assets, mainly due to a decrease in cash and investments of about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. And ninety-seven percent of that was just due to utilizing those ARPA funds, so. Um, as you use those ARPA funds, obviously you're using the cash and investments from those funds, and we're expecting those to decrease. There was also a decrease in liabilities of almost two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, that was mainly due to the current liabilities. And so there was, there were a lot of special assessments going on, and those ended in the prior year, or ended in this year. And so that led to a decrease in those current liabilities, in addition, there was a decrease in payables accrued at year end, and that's really just due to timing. But overall, net position increased, almost four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, with the unrestricted portion increasing almost three hundred and eighty-three thousand. So taking a look at the same government-wide statement, or the revenues and expenses, so we see both. A decrease in revenues and expenses. If you, once you eliminate those transfers out. So there was a decrease of revenue of about two hundred and twenty-three thousand, and once you eliminate the transfers out, you have had a decrease in expenditures of about three hundred and fifty-eight thousand. So most of that was due to grants decreasing, and so you used a lot more ARPA funds in the prior year. Um, so when you have grants, usually, you know, the revenue and the expenses match because usually grants are for specific item, specific things. And so you usually see those correlate, and so here we see those correlate, which is what I would expect. We continue to see property tax revenue increase based on the taxable values increasing, and overall, there was a positive increase in that position. So next is some, a little excerpts from your governmental fund statements, so. Overall, ARP, the ARPA funds are almost all used at year end, you have a little bit left to use. And then we saw a decrease in the Public Safety Fund of about two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, that was mainly due to. The large capital outlay expenditures in the current year, and so that fund purchased that pumper truck that we talked about. But overall, the general fund had a, an increase of about three hundred and fifty-four thousand, with the unrestricted portion increasing about three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. That did exceed the final budgeted amount in a positive way by about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And one important ratio that I always like to talk about is how many days of expenditures and transfers out do you have in that unre, unrestricted net. Fund balance, and so at the end of the fiscal year, you had about five hundred and forty-six days. So the GFOA, or Government Finance Officers Association recommends no less than sixty days for that financial measure, so you far exceed that, so you have a very healthy unrestricted fund balance in your general fund. So next is just a little bit of excerpts from the Water and Sewer Fund, take a look what happened there during the year, so overall, there was an increase in that position of about two point two million during the year. Operating revenues and expenses, overall, there was an operating loss of about eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in that fund. So you see there on that statement, there is something called a special item, so what a special item is, is something that is. Within the control of management, but infrequent or unusual in occurrence. So this year, there was an adjustment for the Water and Sewer Fund litigation because it had been partially settled, and so we saw a significant decrease in that. Liability that was booked, and so that increased and added to revenue of about two point nine million. So last is the report on internal controls, so. This letter is also not bound within your report, and it's titled Matters For Management Consideration. So I always like to point out, we don't express an opinion on the system of internal controls. We look at internal controls for limited purposes and limited scope, so we look at it for planning our audit, you know, looking at where the risk areas are. And maybe where there could be a potential misstatement. And so, but if we did identify a deficiency in internal controls, we do have to report it. So there's kind of a couple of different levels, so your first and lowest level of an internal control deficiency is something called an other matter. It's not a significant deficiency or material weakness yet, but it's something that, you know, maybe we think is important enough to bring to your attention. And then you get to the, that mid-level, which is a significant deficiency, and it means, you know, it's not as likely it will result in a material misstatement, but it potentially could. And then that highest level is a material weakness, or a material weakness, which, you know. Means that there's a reasonable possibility that there could be a material misstatement, that's not caught in a timely matter. And so there are some material weaknesses and significant deficiencies reported within this communication. They're all repeat from the last year's audit, nothing has changed, there weren't any new one, new additional findings during this year's audit. So, and I know we've gone over those before, so I'm not gonna go over all of them, but I've, but please, if anyone has any questions on any, please just ask me. So I think those are the main things I wanted to discuss, does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to thank you, Michelle and Laura and Abby for all their help during the audit, I know we come in and ask a lot of you guys, and you guys. Do a great job getting us everything that we need and answering all of our questions, so thank you, guys.
You guys maybe just.
We try, we try. Thank you, have a great evening.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion in that day of season five, we got it.
Support.
Any other discussion?
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Ryder.
Yes.
Trustee Plavich.
Yes.
Trustee Laven.
Yes.
Clerk Plavich, yes, Treasurer Larry Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Piszewski.
Yes.
Budget adjustment. That's on that whole, bro. One of these. In general fund on the first page. Is to put thirty-five thousand in the general fund contributions. And it's the reason we have one of our findings in the audit, so. We have not been budgeting for those shared expenses in the general fund.
In the first part of the meeting.
Right, we are budgeting for the amount of money we contribute, but not those shared expenses. So we have to show that as an expense in the general fund, and that.
Are those gonna be recalculated? They should be done annually.
Yes, at the end of the fiscal year, Haley has a spreadsheet, she puts out all the different. Charges in there, and we recalculate.
Does that mean?
So if expenses go up, then they're gonna, they're shared.
Contribution.
Right, we're not gonna keep doing, previously, before last year, we just did these. Flat amounts every year. Now we're recalculating it based on actual thing.
And, and the same process we've, we've carried forward in the past several years will be the same moving forward.
We just started it last year.
But I mean, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a paper transaction, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. Um. The other. There are several, in the public safety, the majority of it is um, moving the paid-on-call money, because no one is going to have salaries. Um, for the impact shifts. And adding money to vehicle maintenance, which you'll see that only to, so new business seven and eight. And with the water fund, those are just. Adjustments needed, because we are going through more postage than normal, because of the new billings, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget's adjustments as presented.
I'll support it.
May you discussion?
Trustee Ryder.
Yes.
Trustee Plavich.
Yes.
People have a.
Yes.
Clerk Plavich, yes, Treasurer Larry Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Supervisor Piszewski.
Yes, motion carries. Item number three is a charitable gaming license resolution. Foster Clause, I came here and asked for us to approve this resolution for them, for their. My mind is completely blank, right?
Foster Clause.
For a fun.
Yeah, it's. For a fundraising event.
I'll make a motion to, to accept, or to, to authorize this resolution, support.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll, roll call? For resolutions?
No, no, uh, well, no, nope.
Okay, all those in favor of um, approving the resolution for the charitable gaming license for Foster Clause, signify by saying aye.
Alright.
Close the same?
Motion to.
Walking through that. Um. Benefits real.
Benefits real for employees, trusty effective, January third. Um, the only. Benefit that the employees paid for that had a, the increase of the dental, it went up six point nine percent, they had an option to go with the cost. I put it out to all the members who are currently enrolled in the dental, if they wanted to change or absorb the six point nine percent. Um, those that did reply to my email wanted to stay. No, I, there's a few that didn't reply, so. I think we should just stay with the dental as is. Vision did not change, and right. Um, can we have a question for you about?
Yeah, um, on the IAFS. Agreement, your union agreement. Just read it aloud, the township will provide health insurance coverage for full-time employees. Via Blue Cross Blue Shield, SB HSA Gold thirteen hundred with Health Savian's account funding. That is the only. Reference to what you need to provide. And then the FOP contract. You have, township agrees to provide an insurance program providing uh, health insurance for full-time employees, the employer will enter into a master policy or policies of insurance with an insurance company. Or companies of its choice to provide such insurance coverage. Also, insurance shall be subject to change on an annual basis, consistent with Public Act one fifty-two in the party's practice. The employer shall have the right to substitute health insurance and/or prescription drug plan providers, so long as the substituted plans provide substantially the same or comparable benefits. And that's the only guidance we have regarding. Changing plans?
Mm-hmm.
So your. For your administrative workers. It's specifically. Naming the, the plan, the Blue Cross Blue Shield, SB HSA Gold thirteen hundred. Does that get altered by? What you're considering now?
Certainly, we have the Simply Blue HSA PPO. Gold option. What we're thinking of going to is the Simply Blue HSA PPO Gold Option number two, which is, just changes the deductibles.
And that's.
And COVID.
So, yeah, the what I've, what I've been reading that talks about an HSA Gold thirteen hundred, but neither of those are. Exactly described.
No, no.
What you're stating, so.
The thirteen hundred isn't even.
I was gonna say that even, it's probably not even offered.
It's not offered, that's why we're gonna go.
Well, that was gonna be my question on the contract, how can we live up to a contract if, if the third party doesn't even offer that?
Right.
Yeah, I'm sure it's an oversight that this just never got updated.
Yeah.
Right.
In the last go-around negotiations. So, wanna provide, you gotta provide coverage, you have been providing coverage, just try to provide the, as coverage you can. And then next, go around with the union or maybe run addendum.
Yeah, that would.
After this meeting, that. After this meeting, that, you know, alert, alert everyone that need to clean this language up. Or make it broad enough.
Yeah. So, so we would have to stick with what it says in this union contract. We're going to bring it up to negotiate. Their negotiation should start soon.
But we don't have the HSA Gold thirteen hundred right now, do we?
Right. No.
Yeah. Should have been operating under another policy, which no one's complaining.
Right.
So we don't want to remove coverage or worsen it.
So what is that factor? What would make it worse? So like that alternate one plan? Deductibles go up, but to me it looks like way better coverage.
Your, your actual co-pay total for the year is down. Right?
Out of pocket max are the same, but there's no co-insurance. And then there's no, uh, no charge after deductibles, man. For a lot of your coverages. But the deductible is a little bit higher.
And this is the deadline for electing this?
Uh, let's be called a special meeting in a week or two. Because our opening law starts at the end of November. So it's set before our next board meeting.
But no matter what, if, if, if the contract language expects there to be something in there that is simply no longer available in the, in the marketplace, how do you live up to that contract?
I don't think we can.
Neither party could.
Right.
But it seems to me that you could, you could try to get as close to whatever that is, which we don't know that, we don't know all the coverage parts of the, of the thirteen hundred. And do the.
The one closest to what that was.
Is the alternative one.
Yeah.
Or the current.
Is the renewal.
Renewal, then, then why wouldn't we stay with the renewal? I mean, if that's the closest representation, unless you guys felt as though there was something better, I, I haven't been, been involved in this.
I'm good to stay with the renewal.
But I'm fine. I just thought the other one was better, but it's also.
Well, thanks for being able to put this up for.
It's four hundred dollars more.
The alternate one, yeah. But as it is, it looks like it's what a fourteen percent, fourteen point one percent increase versus a, uh, what would be a sixteen point nine and essentially all things that we currently have, we would retain having and.
Right. The only change would be in the deductible. Where if you're single, it would go up fifty dollars.
Under the alternative one.
No.
Oh.
Under, if we just did the renewal.
Oh.
I would recommend that we stay the same with all of our benefit coverages.
Got a motion?
I'll make a motion if we.
There's a support. Any discussion?
Uh, so for future reference, do we need to look at the language in the contract?
Yeah, the.
The FOP would be a way to write that language.
Yeah, the FOP gives more leeway for, as long as we've got a substantial tangible benefit.
Yeah, I would agree.
I thought you said the FOP.
He did, but it's not. It's IAFF.
The IAFF is the one that's real specific, whereas the FOP is.
Exactly.
Gives you latitude.
Okay.
Which is more reasonable language.
Alright, so we have a motion at support.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Lat.
Yes.
Third Clot, yes. Treasurer, Valerie Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Paul.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Paul.
Yes.
Supervisor, Treasurer.
Yes. Motion carries. Item number five, FNB Engineering Capital Asset List.
Me again. So on our audit, we have that cap full asset list that's been a finding since God here. Gabby and I spoke with the engineers at FNB C, and this is a quote to provide us with that list and what the values are. So for nine thousand eight hundred dollars, they do this. And it would help, it will eliminate that finding in our audit.
Do you know if they send that to us in a, in a, I'm sure it comes out in a document that says what the actual items are, but are, do they value those items? And, and are they depreciated values?
They have to give us depreciated values, what they would be on the book.
Current appreciated values and residual values for assets.
So it would be the, the amount of underground line, uh, pipes, pumps, all that sort of stuff. Well, this is something that unfortunately the, the previous auditor decided to keep.
It would not give, yeah.
Yeah. And so this has been something that since long as I've been on this board, that's been an issue.
Yeah.
So it seems to me as though we should get past this issue and get this done. I'll make that a motion to approve the, uh, FNB Engineering Capital Asset List.
Even support.
And we have money.
Norm's, Morgan, Steve.
Is there any other discussion?
Where's the money coming from for that? Professional General Services.
Oh, and I'll make a, I'm going to add to that motion, I'm sorry, to, to follow the language inherent to the time and materials not to exceed an estimated ninety-five hundred dollars.
You go with that? Any other discussion?
Third Clot, yes. Treasurer, Valerie Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Paul.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Paul.
Yes.
Trustee Lat.
Yes.
Okay, item number six is our planning commission case. So. Then I'm going to, now over to you.
Want me to talk again? Like others at this table, I got a bit of a cough and laryngitis. Not the greatest night for me to be reading, but I'm happy to do so, and I've got some things to go through, so bear with me as I help us work through this. This is a conditional rezoning case. The legislature and the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act created this thing. We're used to rezonings, for example, the mall property in the old Kmart building that was rezoned from a business district to, I think, light industrial. Received an application to do that. That changed the zoning district for that piece of property. All uses under the light industrial district in your zoning ordinance are possible on those zones. And that was a decision with the planning commission's help that the township board made for those two things. Conditional zoning is related to that process, but it's not the same. The Zoning Enabling Act, number of years ago, came up with, I'll just read from it. An owner of land may voluntarily offer in writing and the local unit of government may approve certain use in development of the land as a condition to a rezoning of the land or an amendment to a zoning map. The process is the applicant, the property owner, goes to the municipality and says, I want a rezoning. But I don't think you're going to rezone like the other examples to light industrial because all those various possible uses can come into play. I need a more limited approval and I'm voluntarily offering various conditions. One I had in another municipality was somebody wanted to erect a cell phone tower in a business district and their zoning ordinance said those are only allowed in the industrial zone. So they applied for a conditional rezoning for that piece of property to industrial with the following conditions. It'll be just a tower and the tower will have the following restrictions and, and requirements. And so in a sense, it's an agreement between the applicant and the municipality and the conditions. If approved, put into a recordable document, they get recorded with the register of deeds. They attach to that property. That property is bound by it. If a person violated the conditions, it's something beyond what, uh, what they agreed to do, then the township's remedy is to revoke that approval. Uh, take the person to court under a municipal civil infraction. It'd be a zoning violation. Okay, so next, in your, your zoning ordinance also addresses conditional rezonings. And the process begins just as a regular rezoning with planning commission review. And that occurred in this case. Excuse me, the planning commission after public hearing. In consideration of the factors set forth in section one zero zero two of this ordinance may recommend approval, approval with recommended changes or denial of the rezoning, provided however that any recommended changes to the offer of conditions are acceptable to and thereafter offered by the owner. So the planning commission for this application did hold a public hearing and notice went out to, uh, area residents and then they so the planning commission makes a recommendation. They're charged with holding the public hearing, getting the input from the applicant, from the residents, uh, area residents, gathering it all in one big packet for the legislature, you guys, the township board. And, uh, and in addition to that, providing a recommendation, it also goes to the county planning commission. Uh, and sometimes they chime in and sometimes, uh, they don't. Uh, so all those steps were followed. And in this case, the planning commission, I'll just read their decision. So I'll have that right place in my head. Uh, vice chairperson Woodruff, oh, let me back up a little bit. In this case, the applicant is asking for a change of their property. There's a conditional rezoning from residential R1 to the agricultural zoning district. So in the planning commission, following their public hearing, vice chairman Woodruff made a motion to not recommend the conditional rezone request to the board of trustees for the following reasons. Supported by R Brown. A, a rezone is not required to plant trees. B, there is concern of future use in an agricultural zone. C, the soil is not conducive for the growing of trees. No vote was taken. And that motion was adopted. All right, see where I'm at here. With, uh, any requested conditional rezoning, your ordinance and due process and state law and case law interpreting our zoning, uh, requirements requires that a municipality base its decision regarding a rezoning or a conditional rezoning on standards that are included in your zoning ordinance. That is to prevent arbitrary decisions, emotional decisions. Sometimes the public hearings get heavily populated and heated and maybe ninety percent are for it and ten percent are against it or vice versa. And sometimes a municipal body is persuaded uh, based on something like that. We want to eliminate that. We want objective standards to be applied objectively. And for a decision on such an application to be made tied to uh, these listed standards, the standards come from case law. And Denise Klein in her NMCOG zoning ordinance places those standards in, in the zoning ordinance. The Zoning Enabling Act says, here's the procedure, do all these things. It doesn't specifically list the standards. We define the standards from, uh, case law. So she's provided a report, which she's done uh, for a lot of other municipal clients. And so I'm going to direct your attention in mind to her report. And that's the document titled Report number P dash zero two for the date, uh, twenty-five dash two. Uh, conditional rezone to AG or Agricultural District. Uh, description of the project. Here she's stating the conditions that have been offered by the applicant. The applicant has requested a conditional rezoning to the agricultural district. The conditions offered as part of the conditional rezoning include. I'm going to read these in a second. And again, these are the conditions if you approved it that would be placed in a document that the applicant would sign. Township representative would sign it and we would record it. And it would attach to the property. So number one, limited agricultural use solely fruit trees with no other crops or animals allowed. Two, no onsite commercial sales or retail activity without zoning approval. Three, noise and equipment control, only non-commercial equipment, no mechanical sprayers or generators, and only noise between eight AM and six PM. Four, buffers and setbacks, trees to remain ten feet from the property line. Five, environmental practices, organic or low-impact farming. No synthetic pesticides or herbicides. Six, traffic, no increase of vehicular traffic. Denise also points out, fruit trees can be grown on the property, on this property without rezoning to ag. However, the purpose of the rezoning is solely to qualify for grants, uh, by the applicant. So that brings us to uh, the standards to be applied. Ms. Klein points out, as I, uh, just read the planning commission's decision. Uh, she notes in her report that the basis for the motion to recommend against the conditional rezoning uh, where first a rezone is not required to plant trees. And then Ms. Klein adds, this is a true statement, however, this fact does not directly relate to the standards in section one zero zero two. Those are the standards applicable to uh, conditional rezoning. And two, the second basis stated in the finding commission's motion, there is concern of future use in an agricultural zone. And Ms. Klein points out, the applicant offered conditions which limit the future use of the property to the growing of fruit trees only. Acceptance of those conditions means that no other uses allowed in the agricultural district are permitted on that property. If the conditions were accepted as part of the conditional rezoning, those conditions get recorded with registered deeds as a restriction on that property. The same conditions also apply to and future property owners. That is true. Uh, C, the soil is not conducive for the growing of fruit trees. Uh, that's the final basis stated in the planning commission's motion to not recommend a conditional rezoning. As Klein states, this fact does not relate to the standards given in section one zero zero two. While this may be true, whether an endeavor would be successful should not be a concern of the township. She then provides for you uh, the list of the standards. And proposed is the key operative term here. Um, Mr. Dool, another zoning planner, assisted the planning commission, so she refers to some of the findings made by him. She includes those in her report and she provides uh, in the lighter type her proposed findings based on her experience and expertise. But she always reiterates, because I've been to a lot of these meetings with her, is that you're the body that makes these findings and applies these standards. And so you are not locked onto, locked into what her take is regarding these standards. It's for you as a majority of the board to determine do you agree with these? Uh, she's providing them as an aide. And, uh, and to get you on track as to your thinking as to, okay, what are the possible factors that are raised by these standards because all standards in these ordinances, whether it's special use or a site plan, um, rezoning. By their nature, some of them are pretty broad and don't apply to each situation we're dealing with. So sometimes it's easy to say, well, it's just not, not applicable. Sometimes you wrestle with, well, I'm not quite exactly sure what that means and we don't have a lot of guidance. Well, I'm not quite exactly sure what that means, that we don't have a lot of guidance, just because of the nature of this process. Uh and so what we're relying on is. A group of a deliberative body to. Use your experiences and determine whether you think that these have or have not been met. There are four. Um and there's also a provision in the ordinance. That states that, well, let me find it. But I'm accurate. And I've referred to one, section one zero zero two. Few times and Ms. Klein does in her report, those are the four. Standards that I'm referring to, and so let me just read that, it's not lengthy, in reviewing an application for the rezoning of plan. Factors that should be considered by the planning commission and the township board include, but are not limited to. A, whether the rezoning is consistent with the policy. And uses proposed for that area in the township's master plan. B, whether all of the uses allowed under the proposed rezoning would be compatible compatible. With other zones and uses in the surrounding area. C, whether any public services and facilities would would be significantly adversely impacted by development. Or use under the requested rezoning. And D, whether the uses allowed under the proposed rezoning would be equally or better suited to the area than uses allowed under the current zoning. Land. And I believe that Ms. Klein's report, as I said, she goes through all four of those factors. And then in the uh toward the end of her report, she has other concerns. And I think there she's. Driving home the fact that the standards include but are not limited to, so if there are other pertinent. Standards that you believe apply. I can chime in and tell you whether I think they're. Uh acceptable uh standards to add to this process. Um but they've got to relate to, gotta be reasonable. Gotta relate to, gotta be pertinent to this process, and now I'm talking like a lawyer. So. This part gets a can be a little bit unwieldy, um but the the best way to do this. And we want the meeting minutes to reflect it, you've done this, is to go through. These four standards. And to discuss them. You can go, she's got it in her form. For example, A, whether the rezoning is consistent with the policies and uses proposed for that area in the township's master plan. And then following her discussion of that, the proposed findings, the standard A has been met, yes, no, or not applicable. And we want to document this. Case it ended up in court. We want a judge to see you went through this process and didn't just shoot from the hip. And motion to approve, motion to deny. We want to show that you've gone through this process and based any motion for or against. On your findings regarding these standards. So this is always where we kinda hit a lull because. Now's the time for discussion on on each standard and then. Not required to do a motion for each one, I find that's a good way to do it. And that way, uh or at least. Uh the minutes reflecting that. Four of you agreed that a standard, this standard has been met. Free. Don'ts. Ones unsure, but just so we're minutes and the minutes taker, got a big job. Uh with these types of things, and this is being recorded.
Yes.
So that helps, yeah. Alright. So uh so why don't we start it? Uh the first standard, A, whether the rezoning is consistent with the policies and uses proposed for that area in the township's master plan.
So could this uh be sent back to the planning commission to. Evaluate on these standards and come back with a recommendation based on that?
Damn, gosh, and I gotta go back to yours. Actually, you're bringing up something I meant to read you, so thank you for that. Township board review, this is from the zoning ordinance. And uh and that was on my list and I stopped looking at my list. Don'ts subsection E, after receipt of the planning commission's recommendation, the township board shall deliberate. On the requested conditional rezoning and may approve or deny the reflex. Should the township board consider amendments to the proposed conditional rezoning advisable? And if such contemplated amendments to the offer of conditions are acceptable to. And thereafter offered by the owner, then the township board shall. Refer such amendments to the planning commission for a report thereon within a time specified by the township board. And proceed thereafter in accordance with said statute. So this is where the conditional rezoning statute from the zoning enabling act is a unique. Procedure in that it's gotta be about, are you the applicant? Okay, sorry, keep calling you applicant, so nice to meet you. This is where a municipality can't ram conditions down an applicant's throat. They're the ones voluntarily offering these to us. If through this process. The board said, well, I'd be more comfortable with this if there were another condition. Then we would ask our applicants. Is that acceptable to you, or do you wanna just ride with what you got? Um and then if they say yes, that's an added condition, you send it back. See, do you have to, then the township board shall. Refer such amendments back to the planning commission for a report thereon within a time specified by you. So that would only be if. You weren't satisfied with the 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 condition that's being offered is. Well, the conditions I've read before. The laundry list of them in Denise's report. Limited agricultural use, so we fruit trees with no other crops or animals. No onsite commercial sales or retail activity, paraphrasing, noise and equipment control. Buffers and setbacks, environmental practices, traffic. Oh, if you were considering conditions in addition to that, different from that. Then we would ask whether those were acceptable. This is their, I'm gonna offer to contract, this is their offer. They're making to the municipality and uh and we don't have the power to say, well, you have to change them. You got the power to. Prove or deny. Based on the objective standards listed in the ordinance. But it is a normally a cooperative process with an applicant in this situation, that's where it's a weird.
So it can't be sent back.
Not just like that, no, not not.
Not just based on the conditions that they're offering us.
Right, right.
And the uh. Other question I had was, one of those conditions I think was somehow draining the property.
Let me go right to their application, so I'm sure that there's Denise listed them in her with her description. How do you pronounce your last name?
Melon.
Melon, I'll stop calling you. Mr. Melon Jin, in his uh in his application, initially you applied for a rezone.
Yeah.
And then uh. And then a lot of people don't know about conditional rezoning, so um when they become aware of them, then they do what you did. Uh I voluntarily offer the following conditions, one, limited agricultural use. Property will be used solely for growing and harvesting fruit trees, apples, pear, plum and peach, no other crops or animals will be introduced without. Prior approval, no onsite commercial sales or retail activity. Noise and equipment control. I'm just seeing if we get to your um the one you were listing, buffers and setbacks. Environmental practices, okay, um. All farming will follow organic or low impact growing methods, no synthetic pesticides or herbicides will be used. Irrigation will be done responsibly to prevent runoff or soil erosion. Then traffic assets uh access, was that the one you were?
Yeah, I I wanted to understand, I guess, what what was. Being proposed there because if it's going to affect other. Private lots as opposed to drainage to the lake. But I would hope that would be drainage to the lake only. And is. But I I don't know that it's clear.
I think um the one thing Ms. Ms. Klein's point out in her report is, they can grow fruit trees now.
But the soil's not that tight.
But they could still grow fruit.
Isn't our problem.
So I think the reason you're requesting the rezone is for uh.
Grants, man.
Grant grants from agricultural.
Million different fruit trees over the world and what soil units. Trees grow all the time in what soil, it's not a problem. Getting the proper fruit trees in the proper areas.
Why does it, does it have to be zoned agricultural?
For all A grants or fruit trees, yes. I just lost a five hundred million grant for trees or fruit trees because I'm not agricultural.
Is there a house on the property?
Oh, still warm, yeah.
I drove, is is that road, is that portion of Green Haven Road a private road?
All my private driveway, there's no de-lapse, there's no state.
So so that road that, I drove out there, sorry. And so it seemed very low.
Yes.
And so and and a lot of the. Underbrush that are on you on the either side of the road uh was wet.
Yes.
And so I presume in the springtime. That floods.
There's two natural drains that if you look on my. What is it, my my D, it shows. A natural drain, which is covered and a natural drain with the cover. That area just went, like all summer, there was no water in it. As long as I keep the natural drains open, probably not gonna look for water in. I gotta apply for a permit to put it over the road, which is fifty dollars. But I don't wanna mess up. Tom's. Business by doing.
That that's the that's the cattle.
Yeah, his deed and access is two thirds, he just uses my driveway, it's free.
I I know, so any properties, uh there's a map here that showed the properties of the the. Owners that that have property, I guess along that, do they have an easement up through your property?
No.
No.
They, there was a. Oh, years ago, there was a access between two people. Under contract law, that was between two people, not under. Or it was two people not property, if you look at the deed and access. You have a access under people that are no longer there. But for contract law, that is null and void. And the third degree. There is a deed and access to where I can possibly thirty three, what needed to show on everybody's deeds. Where Tom's supposed to be used, where all that property goes surf. It's just convenient to use my driveway. Tom helped put it in. I mean, it's black and white already and all the deeds.
Everything's got to apply to the standard, so um we can't, or you can't. Nevermind, telling you which way to vote, you can't base your your decision on.
Uh something that's not applying.
Something that's not pertinent to um to the standards.
So are you saying like easements wouldn't be pertinent to these findings?
I don't see how.
Okay, I don't either, so.
Um so just out of curiosity, amending the zoning would not change uh any. Any access or anything like that, going across agricultural property versus residential property? I don't even know if that's a good question.
Boy, you're into the for the best of my knowledge.
Yeah.
So. I just wanna make sure I'm understanding this correctly, so we look at the first one. Whether the zoning is consistent with the policies and uses proposed for that area in the town's master plan. So Rick Dool says our master plan. It's not because it should be residential, but then number three says. But our master plan says the objective is to recognize the importance of farms and helping.
Yep, that's.
So. To me, we could take that one either way.
You you can and and um. Denise Phelps here. Where you'll see in italics, the township needs to determine. Uh the planting fruit trees is an incompatible use, take into account that other uses in agricultural district would not be allowed.
So this is just my opinion, I look at that, I think. Why wouldn't we allow to plant fruit trees there?
We can now anyway.
Right, he can now, so this to me is consistent with what you can do on this land. And our master plan. Am I reading this differently than anybody, I mean?
There was a finding that I read somewhere, I can't find it right now, and I think it was from, there's my. Oh, where was it, here. With the help of uh the other, the other guy that our.
Rick Dool.
Dool.
Dool. I read somewhere that where there was an indication that. It was not consistent with the master plan, and I can't find where.
It's in there, that it's not consistent, but then it does say our master plan contains.
No, no, I mean, there was another section.
Oh.
Yeah, there was.
He he provided a report.
Right.
And then a supplemental report to the planning commission, so that might be what you're thinking about.
So the first report that he supplied was just for a rezone. And then uh Mr. Melon Jim provided a secondary.
Can that's a.
Application that was a a conditional, not just a rezone, because as we already know, we can't just rezone as it's spot zoning and we.
Right.
We can't do that. So that may be what you're talking about, is that a new.
Well, I I read through the whole thing and I can't find it, Nike.
Denise cites to it, original finding from report by Rick Dool. So uh probably from his initial report.
So I think the main key here is um. On the findings for A, where it says number two, the township master plan contains objective preserve the integrity of existing residential labor protecting them from intrusion of incompatible uses. Uh which is where Tim was just referring to, she says, we need to determine if planting the fruit trees is incompatible use. And to take into account that because it's conditional, any other. Any other changes that are in the ag district that would be allowable are not, don't apply to this. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yep, there uh the normal list of allowable. For special uses allowed in the ag district are coming into play. What's coming into play is the proposed use with the conditions attached to them, so. So raising livestock wouldn't wouldn't be allowed, for example.
Right, which was also a condition that he did submit, there would be no, no.
And and do I understand?
No animals allowed.
That. Should the applicant sell his property? That that that. Whatever the decision we made, if we made a decision to rezone it, follows all future properties.
It follows all future properties unless a subsequent owner. Said, I don't need this, or this doesn't make sense for me, that person could come back to the board. And say, I wanna undo and be up to the board. Might as well be no reason not to, because. Uh it was for this particular applicant and maybe a subsequent owner might say, yep, that's exactly, I wanna use it the same way and. I'm going to adhere to those conditions. Uh and if they didn't, they'd be subject to violating the zoning ordinance and those consequences. Um but I could see in that cell tower example that I gave, somebody buys that property and says, well, we're buying it to put up. A manufacturer store or something, we're getting rid of it, we don't need that. A manufacturer store or something, we're getting rid of it, we don't need that, we wanna zone back to business, so they would come back to the township. You gotta change that or something else.
What if they violated the uh conditions?
Then the township attorney would uh and the zoning administrator would first write to them. Um I don't believe your ordinance, I'd have to look, some have a provision for revoking, for example, a special use permit. Uh there may be a section regarding revoking permits. You hereby uh you've you've violated this. You got a right to make your case to the township board. You still believe you violated it, we're gonna notify you that it's revoked. If you continue the violation, then you're gonna be ticketed under the zoning ordinance for municipal civil infraction. And that allows the district court to issue injunctive relief and mandate that something stop or or change. So that's, those are the teeth behind the ordinance. Or circuit court for injunction, but normally don't have to do that anymore. So, yeah, so the first standard, you can either do it by motion for each standard. Or by discussion and just giving everybody an opportunity to say, for the record, for the minutes. You believe that the standard has been met or not, and you can much discussion as you need. Try to convince each other, um but we want to know. Okay.
If that would be easier for taking that.
Okay.
Each one.
And then that was, you have a motion, you got discussion. Um so just want everybody's feelings known, or whether. Whether you agree or disagree.
So.
So whether the rezoning is consistent with the policies and uses proposed for that area in the township's master plan. Section one zero zero two zoning ordinance.
I look at that. I look at number three as more of a comment or a statement as opposed to uh anything consistent with. The request, you know, we're, yeah, we wanna recognize farming in Alpine Township. Can you, that 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 seems ambiguous.
I went through this with another municipality where the only standard, this was regarding. A conditional zoning, and the only standard that operated against it arguably was. This standard. And the board was digging into the master plan and. It was some hazy stuff, and it wasn't uh. And that was the only standard, everything else. Inarguably was met. And so they went to the master plan, well, and they were all picking things out of it that. Could be construed as for or against, look at that statement and just as you pointed out. Phrases like that that are included in it, and so, well, Tim, we base it just on that. I'm glad we didn't go to court. They ended up.
Yeah, well, I'm just, I'm struggling with uh. Just the fact that it it reads more like. You know, an encouragement that the township uh sports uh farming, you know, be a township. Clearly it does, that doesn't necessarily mean that I can uh, cause I'm farming in my backyard.
Think what Denise is uh to what she's uh again, it's her. This is her uh take and one that you're not bound by, but she points out that quoting from the master plan. That an objective is to preserve the integrity of existing residential neighborhoods by protecting them from intrusion of incompatible uses. And so steering you to ask if planting fruit trees would be incompatible. On the one hand, the other hand, she's stating. They can plant fruit trees.
Well, that that was the other thing, was that as I read the uh document, there's nothing. Preventing them from doing that now, but for a financial concern. Uh it is that our responsibility as a as a township body to concern themselves with the. Uh financial concerns of one one applicant, or do we, do we look at the greater good? And I started to think about it from a greater good standpoint, and the the. Zoning doesn't prohibit it now.
No.
Under any of those conditions, in fact, they probably have broader conditions, um because this is. His letter makes what he would do conditional, whereas. The R one may not have those same conditions, because it's already, oh, you gotta live within the confines of the R one zoning, right?
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to set up a.
A business. Right, it would be just for the planting of trees, and so and so if if the applicant is just looking at. Uh planting various trees. That can be done currently. Under the, under the whatever protocol he needs to follow. And and although I can understand why he would wanna go ag, because there's financial benefit. Uh for applying for grants and so on, and that's why I asked the question whether or not uh those grants are strictly. Uh prohibited outside of an agricultural zone. And I guess without seeing, you know, I'll I'll take your word for it, uh you don't see the uh. Wouldn't be allowed, I don't know why somebody wouldn't just be able to plant the trees now.
Well, but the opposite of that is true too, if I'm understanding, is that. You know, they can only do this, and it's if it's only limited to that same use that's allowed now. But by changing the the uh zoning, it becomes uh financially. More worthwhile, you know, they can get a grant to plant trees on an egg property where they can't on residential property.
Yeah, no, I I understand that, and I guess I looked at it from the standpoint of uh, I don't know where the, why that would be our concern. But uh whether or not um um if you can already do this. And the only reason why we have an applicant asking for a a rezoning is so that so that they can. Take advantage of grant monies that might be available. I guess I didn't look at it from the standpoint of an individual applicant's request, as opposed to. Just looking at what the master plan already allows to be able to do that.
Well, I guess the point is, then we wouldn't have the need for. This limited. Conditional rezone. Yeah, so.
I guess I'm not understanding why we say it's not consistent when he's not doing anything that already be done.
That's what.
So it's not going to hurt, why would that hurt the neighbor's property or anything? He's not bringing in bulls or anything like that. He can plant as many trees as he wants. But if we, if we do a conditional rezone, he can also get grants to improve the property.
Yeah, maybe.
I guess I'm not seeing where it would hurt, so if someone can.
No, I can't either.
I just, I know how bad the Adam olives are, I mean, they're horrible, I mean, they're so invasive that. I know, I'm just saying though, but they grow and I mean, I don't even know how you ever get rid of them, I mean, you try to. Calm down and they grow way back, or you try to, you know what I mean, they're terrible.
What are we talking about?
Just the Adam olives that are so invasive in that area that.
In the application, uh they referred to the fact that they would remove the invasive Adam olives and.
That's all the stuff that's. Growing up there.
Three different basic species in there that would be moved, D, you give me the green light, go.
So that's actually something that DQ would be.
Yeah, so again. Yes, yes, so the point with that is that that's not, doesn't reflect in the findings, whether or not he. Whether or not the DEQ gives permission to do that or not.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I get that.
But I make a motion and. We approve.
We're just doing this standard right now, so.
Right, standard A.
Standard A.
I mean, that's what I recommend it.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, I see, I see, I see, motion to approve this.
So just for clarification, Russ, your motion is to.
Say that it.
We, I'm sorry, your motion is that. Uh standard A has been met. Standard A, the one that we just discussed.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's your motion?
Well, yeah, to approve what they're asking for.
So are you gonna read it?
I'll I'll support that. Is there an actual motion though? So is your motion?
Just A, A then, yeah.
To say that. The rezoning is consistent with policies and uses proposed for that area in the township's master plan, okay? That is trustee Reiner's motion, and I have supported it.
Is there any other, any discussion on that, just standard A? Roll call.
Treasury Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
No.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Supervisor Kuzimowski, yes. So now do we go on to B?
Yeah, whether all. Of the uses allowed under the proposed rezoning would be compatible with other zones and uses in the surrounding area. And Denise Klein's proposed findings, let's get my head straight again. One, clearing brush and planting fruit trees would be, oh, she's quoting from Rick Duel. Clearing brush and planting fruit trees would be compatible with other zones and uses in the surrounding area. She states original finding from report by Rick Duel. Two, due to the conditions offered by the applicant, all other applicable uses in the agricultural district would not be permitted. If the conditional zoning were to be approved, restrictions on the property will be filed with the register of deeds. Therefore, acceptance of the conditions means that only, the only use that would be allowed in agricultural district would be growing. And harvesting of fruit trees. And so that that pertains to, again, I'm gonna reread the standard, whether. All of the uses allowed under the proposed rezoning would be compatible with other zones and uses in the surrounding area. And that standard is normally when we're doing a rezoning. Like with the K Mar building, all of the uses in the light industrial are possible, and we take that into account. So she's noting that that's not our case, because it's a conditional zoning. And only. Uh proposed use would be allowed with the proposed conditions.
So we're only concerning ourselves with the conditions that have been provided? Not all conditions for agr- for agricultural, only those conditions that have been.
Which.
Right, so I think she's.
So as a general finding, number one would be would be true in virtually any zone.
Yeah, that's what, that's, that's what she's uh, not directly speaking for her, of course, but that's my take on it again. Clearing brush and planting fruit trees would be compatible with other zones and uses in the surrounding area. And again, this is one of those standards, it doesn't. It applies, and it fits, because you're determining whether the proposed use would be compatible with other zones and uses in the surrounding area. And. I'm just pointing out to you that the only use we're talking about is the fruit tree planting, because of the.
Which is already considered compatible as a residential. So, so it would be.
Good question. Mr. Malanga, how many fruit taste do you plan on planting?
I was hoping to get over a hundred.
What are you gonna do with all the fruit?
Everybody eats fruit. There's like. Uh what was the place called? Farmers market, yeah. Just like the school up the road, I went to a fruit farm when I was a kid. All the school kids got to walk out, and they were gonna pick out what they need, I don't know, I just love fruit trees. I donate them to schools.
We also can.
So we need a separate motion for.
Yeah, the same, same process.
Make make the motion to.
You're making.
So you're saying that that.
B.
These have been met. I mean, as a general comment, those would be met, just in general.
So we have a motion?
Yeah, it's the.
Is there any discussion about standard B? Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Plavich, yes, Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Kuzimowski.
Yes.
Okay, uh C, whether any public services and facilities would be significantly adversely impacted. By a development or use under the requested rezoning. Public services and facilities, and her proposed finding. One, clearing brush and planting fruit trees would not adversely impact public services and facilities. As no additional police, fire, sanitary facilities, educational facilities, et cetera, would be required.
Can I make a motion then, that we accept that standard C has been met?
There any discussion?
Well, I think there's potential there, but.
Potential what?
Well, I mean, like if you have. Kids out there on that property, could there be a need for services to be there? Sure, right? These or EMS or any of those. But. That's not our concern.
What are you?
It's not taking additional.
I I didn't follow him.
Yeah, I didn't.
Well, say he does have an orchard and kids aren't allowed to come out there from the school or whatever, could there be a. An accident or somewhere, the announcement, something.
But he can have a hundred trees whether or not.
Right, yeah.
So would that be a condition that would have to be set?
We'd have to do. Have another agreement, uh they'd have to be agreeable and go back to the planning machine.
But is that even a condition that could be set to say that?
That'd be up to the applicant, but um right now, uh the condition is no onsite commercial sales or retail activity. No onsite farm stand, market or retail sales to the public will be conducted without a separate special risk permit or zoning approval.
But a girl scout troop could go there for a.
Couldn't go anywhere.
Yeah, because you're not charging, right? So I have a motion, I made the motion, supported by trustee Reiner, that standard C has been met.
Uh just couple more questions that I I I'm. And I I maybe I'm going too deeply into the question, I don't know, but. If access to me becomes, starts to become a bit of an issue, that if. If you clear out all of the. The the stuff that's growing there now, does that mean that 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 would tend to more dry out the land? Or does that mean that there'd be more water uh flowing through those areas uh when. When there's, when there's runoff, because it doesn't sound like there's culvert, so I didn't, I didn't look, nor did I. Think to look that there's any drainage culverts or anything like that.
DQ give me a brutal.
And I recognize that that's probably not our concern, but I'm just wondering about. Fire trucks and that stuff, can can they get through there?
The driveway won't change.
It wouldn't be, you don't have to raise it or anything like that.
The power, there's power lines right there to get standard. They don't even need, but standard had to buy the power lines to put them in there. It's a mess for these and part of it. It's a mess for these and part of it. Um, but the roads are, I don't want on, shut the road enough. Yeah, they have. Third street is the ease button, they can get through any of that through third street.
Down Brackens driveway?
Yeah, that's the third.
Cause that's the GPS site that always takes me home.
That's the ease button.
I thought it was blocked off.
It's.
Okay, let's um, go back to the standard. We have a motion and support. The motion is that any public services and facilities would be significantly adversely impacted by the develop, by a development or use under the requested zoning.
Would not.
Would not be significant. Okay, roll call. Trustee Reiner?
Yes.
Trustee Polley?
Yes.
Trustee Lappin?
No.
Clerk Plavitch, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers?
Yes.
Trustee Crawl?
Yes.
Supervisor Kozibowski?
Yes.
And then read the next one? You ready?
Yes.
Whether the uses allowed under the proposed rezoning would be equally or better suited to the area than uses allowed under the current zoning of the land. Denise simply notes. Clearing brush and planting fruit trees would be equally suited to the area as they are currently allowed in any district.
So that standard, I think, is applicable across the board.
Like if.
Clearing and planting, I don't think there's anything. In our zoning that says that fruit trees can't be planted. Anywhere.
Well, I'll make that motion. Motion that. Standard D. Yeah, yeah. Is.
Has been met.
Been met, yeah.
I'll support that.
Thank you.
Well, I, what was the motion?
The motion is that standard D. Whether the use allows under the proposed rezoning would be equal or better suited to the area than other allowed under the current zoning of the land.
So then that would be yes?
Yes. If you think it's been met.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a motion and support, any discussion? Well. Trustee Polley?
Yes.
Trustee Lappin?
Yes.
Clerk Plavitch, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers?
Yes.
Trustee Crawl?
No.
Trustee Reiner?
Yes.
Supervisor Kozibowski?
Yes.
I mean, that's these.
So is, do we have to do another motion?
Yes.
Do we go over letter D though? We need to go through those things.
I want, yeah, everybody should be aware of them, um. You hired. Yep, you've hired Denise to, uh. Provide her comments, and again, it's up to you. As to the way, if any, to give to her comments, I could read them again, just for the public's benefit too. Uh, E, other concerns. A township resident has concerns about alterations that might occur to the wetlands on the property and hydrology of the area from any required drainage and filling that might be required to plant fruit trees. However, this could happen whether or not the property is zoned ag. The property remains residential, the property owner could still work with Eagle to acquire a permit to alter a wetland to plant fruit trees. Next, removal of the existing vegetation may provide the opportunity for glossy buckthorn to establish. However, the property owner could remove the vegetation without the rezoning as well. Uh, next, the township should consider the application of the Michigan Right to Farm Act, the opinion of. M. Dard should be sought out to determine if this type of orchard can exist in this location outside of an agricultural district. Or the township may place additional findings of fact here. And uh, big number three regarding the Right to Farm Act. Uh, was Denise's. Uh, just from my discussion where they're noting that. Sometimes the Right to Farm Act. Restricts what we can do. What the township or municipality can do regarding zoning. No chickens allowed on your property in this district. And they apply, they get a determination from M. Dard. That states, well, you've got enough land. You've got, the conditions are right, the coop is far enough away. And regardless of the zoning developments. You'll be violating the Right to Farm Act if you take this person to court, try to prohibit them from doing so. And so I think here she was saying. M. Dard could have chimed in and said. You can't stop this anyway.
That's my understanding, yes.
But we don't have anything from her. Uh, she's also supplied, uh, sample motions. And this is important. It's up to you as to. Uh, what to decide and what to base your decision on. Should be based on standards. Um, but we want the record through the minutes to show. That what you based your decision on. First sample or example motion, one, motion to approve the conditional rezoning request to rezone. Twelve forty-five Green Haven Lane to the agricultural district based on the findings of fact contained in. Report number P zero two twenty-five-two with the offered statement of conditions. Uh, or. Motion to deny the conditional rezoning request to rezone. This property to the agricultural district based on the findings of fact contained in. The same reports.
Based on. The fact that the motion's following the standards.
Based on, cause you've. Made determinations based on each of these standards. Based on the. So that would be based on the findings included in the report. Based on the. Comments that you've made. During this hearing in support of your motion. Really it'd be based on. The findings you just made regarding the standard.
I would make motion number one, which is the motion to approve the conditional rezoning request to rezone twelve forty-five Green Haven Lane. To the agricultural district. Based on the findings of fact contained in the report. Number P O two two five two. With the offered statement of conditions. And it would have to then be. Those conditions would have to be recorded.
Yes.
To register deeds.
Yep, and, and um. And actually, a ordinance gets adopted. That conditionally rezones the property and it gets, be a motion to, which will be a separate motion if. This motion succeeds. Uh, be a motion to adopt an ordinance to conditionally rezone this property, it'd be a motion to introduce. That, cause we're a chartered township. And uh, in the next meeting. It would be approving that, and then I need to draft a document that's recordable and I have your contact information. I'm getting ahead of myself because the motion hasn't been adopted, but that would be the procedure.
That's the motion, okay.
I'll support it. Um, any? Discussion? Trustee Lappin?
Start with me?
Yes.
No.
Clerk Plavitch, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers?
Yes.
Trustee Crawl?
Yes.
Trustee Reiner?
Yes.
Trustee Polley?
Yes.
Supervisor Kozibowski?
Yes.
I can go on to the ordinance, which uh, whenever we have a rezoning. Uh, regular rezoning, we draft a simple ordinance. And uh, so. I've drafted this in case, uh, it was going to be approved. Let me just read section one, zoning ordinance amendment. The zoning designation for the following described property shall be changed from the one family residential. District R one to the agricultural district. A pursuant to the charter township of Alpena Board of Trustees. Date, October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Adoption of a motion to approve a conditional rezoning request. This conditional rezoning shall be in conjunction with and subject to the written statement of conditions to be signed by the applicant. In section one zero zero three of the Charter Township of Alpena zoning ordinance. And any future zoning ordinance provisions addressing conditional rezoning requirements. In addition, the Charter Township of Alpena zoning map shall be amended to reflect this change. Subject property is described as follows. Provide the tax ID number twelve forty-five Green Haven Lane. So it'd be a motion to introduce. This would be ordinance number one fifty-nine, motion to introduce proposed ordinance number one fifty-nine.
Is, is this a general ordinance or a specific ordinance to this situ, to this situation?
Uh, to this particular piece of property, uh, pursuant to this. Conditional rezoning application and. In conjunction with the recorded document. That's gonna be signed by the applicant that states the conditions. And gets recorded and so anybody, anybody searching the title or. Planning to buy the property someday would, would have noticed everything, yeah. This is also for future. Township board officials to see that back in twenty twenty-five, this particular piece of property became subject to this conditional result.
I guess I'll make that motion for the introduction of ordinance one fifty-nine.
Support. Any discussion? Clerk Plavitch, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers?
Yes.
Trustee Crawl?
Yes.
Trustee Reiner?
Yes.
Trustee Polley?
Yes.
Trustee Lappin?
Yes.
Supervisor Kozibowski?
I have your contact informations. I want to have the document ready, yeah, okay. And you two own the property together?
My daughter and my wife.
Okay.
She's home with her baby.
Okay, and I saw her name, the application is Patricia? Okay, so I'll, she'll, she would sign it too as an owner, yep, yeah.
Is there anything else that?
I'm done.
I'm just uh, making sure that we.
Nope, you're, you've covered it.
Eyes dotted and teeth crossed and.
Yep, you've covered it, thank you.
Okay. Everybody still with us? Uh, moving on to number seven.
Um. The chief is not here, but he is requesting the approval of the. Estimate for six thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars fifty-four cents per tires for engine two and three. That would be paid out of vehicle expense, which we just approved a budget adjustment with the money in there.
I'll make that motion.
No support.
Any discussion? Yeah.
Um, what happened to? Normal maintenance? All of a sudden it needs tires? Am I talking out of turn here?
I guess I'm not sure what you're saying, isn't new tires normal maintenance?
Yeah, is that part of their, uh, in the budget when they ask for maintenance?
Well, we haven't been doing maintenance as op. Often as we should, which is why we have these two large bills for maintenance. We have not been keeping up, up early.
Do you know why? A chance?
I would have to ask the previous chief. Why?
Oh.
Two previous.
I just think two previous chiefs ago.
Yeah.
Did we get other bills?
He did, and this was the best.
Are we gonna go to Bay City and get tires? We will, huh?
They're delivering them, I think.
Yeah, are they, are they, uh? I guess I have a couple of questions, I guess.
I probably don't have answers.
Yeah, I understand, I'll, I'll just voice them. Um. It sounds like these, somebody's gotta drive the truck down to Tefill to have these done?
Yeah.
Audience is shaking.
The audience is shaking their head, so I think, hey, Ryan, do you know more? Yeah, that's what I thought, they are being delivered.
Alright, so then, and then, uh, to, who retorques the stuff after fifty miles, you guys can?
Don't have an answer to that.
Says all wheels and rims must be retorked after fifty miles, please send all payment, blah, blah, blah.
We just have them drive the fifty miles the same day? And get it done? Asking for myself, because why would be?
I would've gone asking for a friend.
No, I'm asking for myself, because it doesn't make sense to have somebody come up here, change tires, leave, and then come back in the next day to. Do that. I would assume, I don't know. Okay, I would. My preference for that would be we just put the fifty miles on the tires and have them fix it. While they're retorking or whatever while they're here.
Well, either that, I don't know if we have a torque wrench, so it's pretty simple to torque that stuff down.
That's out of my.
You guys have a torque wrench?
On their hair too?
I don't know. I just.
I'm sure there's some local place that can do that. If you needed to, but I don't know if it upsets the warranty.
Yeah, would R and R do that?
Either R and R or Ball.
What's wrong with you guys shaking your head that you don't know?
Cause.
Okay, well.
Well, in this bill, there's charts of. It's like. Looks like there's. Mounting the tires, so if they're not doing that, that should be removed from the bill.
Yeah, it says mountain.
Yeah. Parking, it's like parking them poles.
Well, yeah, I know, I know what that is.
Sounds like we have audience members who are.
They mean that's never high enough for the rating, um.
My only concern would be that we're upsetting some warrant. I, I can't imagine that would be a case, but uh. Anyway. Just my two cents.
Okay, well.
I, I just wanted to make sure that the, the, the. Oh, you want me to go completely over again, because I can burn out another.
Well, my God, we, we don't have any bad something. Land is plain, yeah.
We have a motion and we have support.
Yeah, I was drinking my water, roll call please.
Treasure Ellery Summers?
Yes.
Trustee Crawl?
Yes.
Trustee Reiner?
Yes.
Trustee Polley?
Yes.
Trustee Lappin?
Yes.
Clerk Plavitch, yes. Supervisor Kozibowski?
Yes. Motion there is. Okay.
Okay, there's. Um, there's a estimate from the inspection report from R and R for maintenance on engine two. Engine two is, uh, south side. It's. I thought it had a photo on here. Third, it's about thirty-six thousand seventy-five dollars.
That's all?
Excluding the tires.
Excluding the tires.
Okay.
And the chief recommends, we have to do these to keep the engine in service.
Well. But the only thing is sixty, it's not a hundred. This will just.
Okay, here you go.
I don't know what you're saying.
Get that mic close to you.
Well. Well, you have immediate action of pump casting.
Yep.
I thought they did that.
They saw tires, any two, any three sixty three hundred, so we just approved.
Like last week or the week before. There's twenty five thousand of it. It's time sensitive. The remaining eleven thousand can be phased in over time.
But I'm not gonna do it.
I'm saying, right, but forget R and R here, let's get it fixed.
Get it done.
The lid is matter, he needs to build a building of mechanics.
But if we approve it, he can get it done if he's available. And that we're not just approving part of it, having him do part, so. I guess I'll make a motion that we approve of thirty six thousand seventy five.
Twenty five hundred battery box, jeez.
Estimate from R and R for engine two. I don't know, but the chief's got it in his own.
You got that covered by budget?
Pardon me?
Budget covers that?
Yes, with the budget adjustments we already approved, we'll cover these. I'll support that. Thank you.
Sorry, I thought I was supportive.
Is there any discussion?
How old is this thing?
Twelve. Within two years of being powered fifteen. I think it said twelve years old, didn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's two thousand thirteen.
I couldn't see that.
Page two hundred fifty seven.
Twenty fifteen.
Oh, yeah.
Got you. I'm looking at the same thing you are.
Two, two thousand thirteen.
What is the likelihood that this truck needs to be replaced within five years?
Probably pretty good.
Don't forget we have the old green machine too.
Yeah, we're already outside the testing period anyway, geez. We have much choice, do we?
No, we really don't. I think that we need to do a better job of making sure that our equipment is being maintained properly so that we don't run into these.
Yeah, you think?
Yes, I am publicly stating that I feel we need to do a better job of this.
We had a checklist to go through all this stuff. We're just not using those?
Not in this case, we didn't.
Yeah, also.
What is, what's the question?
Yeah, no, I can appreciate those sorts of things. I just, you know, some of these other things where there's rust and, you know, those sorts of things, it's I don't know. I just get surprised at how much it costs to do stuff, and then I suppose when we delay those things, we're just putting salt in the wound.
Getting more rust.
Yeah. Hence the word salt.
Is there any other discussion? Got a motion and support?
Yes.
Trustee Corral.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
No.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clark Flavich, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Kozibowski.
Yes.
That doesn't matter. It's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money, but they're saying. It's gonna be a lot more than that.
Right, I feel like this is the same scenario. We're spending a whole bunch of money to replace it.
There'll be another tomorrow.
Yeah.
But even if you sell it, you can't, you don't want to give it to somebody.
Sell it for more than thirty six thousand dollars and whatever it was.
I don't know, so.
Is that it? Item number nine. Yeah, we're on blight. Item number nine, like the last board meeting, we discussed having a blight committee that blight committee has met. Norma Russ, if you want to take this on.
We're recommending that we have a, an ordinance to pass the half a mil for two years to generate enough money to better enforce our blight requirement.
A half mil?
Half a mil per year for two years.
And how much money will that generate?
Roughly four hundred and some thousand.
No, about two hundred and fifteen.
Two hundred and fifteen total?
Fifteen.
Two hundred and fifteen?
Yeah, there's four thirty, I believe, for full.
Yeah, that's what I meant. So four thirty for two years, right?
Oh, for two, well, per year will be two fifty, yes. Okay, I'm sorry.
What is the plan? How do we use this money to enforce blight?
Well, Tim, I think made that pretty clear that we don't have enough money. We don't have any money budgeted for this year. And we've already had one case that bought this, but how many thousand?
Twelve, twelve hundred.
Hundred?
Plus five hundred that we won't recoup. Well, we won't recoup any of that, but.
But it would, I guess your options then would be if you had a fund of money like that, some municipalities hire a person dedicated to blight ordinance enforcement, so that gave you that.
Right.
Opportunity, and then, right, it would cover legal fees and.
We would be able to hire somebody to be an administrator.
Potentially, in these cases, sometimes you're paying, you get to the stage where you get a court order allowing you to clean it up yourself or demolish the property. That'd be a expense that would be come from that fund also.
And this fund would be used only for blight, blight ordinance. We could hire an administrator for that.
I think.
Administrator, part time, full time. I'd I'd like to see the the blight committee come back to this board with more particulars, but I think now we just need to know if this board will support putting a half a mil on the ballot. And it can go for two years. We're doing a good job. I'm sure the citizens wouldn't mind renewing it if we're not doing a good job. Goodbye. But to go deep into the plans of what you want to do with it, if the board doesn't support this, then there's no such thing.
What about other alternatives? Versus just going for I mean, we have our fire department, village that will be on the next ballot as well.
You don't see that it's necessarily two separate things, separate, yeah, two separate things.
But I feel like they take votes from each other.
Right, that's kind of what I'm, I just didn't know.
I think it's gonna be sure getting another village for the fire department. If we put another.
How many blight issues do we have going right now? Approximately?
Thirty, thirty two.
Thirty two, it's roughly say three, four thousand dollars apiece if we have to push them all the way through? Bar cry from a half million.
Depending if they cave in and sometimes they'll get ticketed and two days later it's cleaned up. And those are successes. Sometimes you go through the process and got to get the court order and motion for contempt and.
Worst case scenario, approximately.
Usually in the twenty five hundred dollar range, I'd say, and a person cannot feel the circuit over. Have a hand at, I guess that's a possibility too. The where it gets expensive is, well, you can have a hearing, somebody contests it or just isn't going to cooperate. You have a trial. When? Get a court order and injunction, and then judge gives the person so many days to comply. They don't comply, then they do a motion for order to show cause, get that personally served, bring it back to the judge. Sometimes the judge is giving you more time and come back again for another hearing. Sometimes you hit a point where you well, we had one we probably would have gotten to where we would have asked for demolition of the house, person sold the house, so. We weren't happy.
But that's not including all the ones you're going to take in the next two years.
Yeah, and that's where you're budgeting, having something like two hundred and fifteen thousand a year would allow you to hire somebody and
But isn't it?
Prosecute a lot of them.
Is that, I'm just asking, but the blight has been handled by the supervisor. I mean, isn't that part of the supervisor's job to do this? And I, I would say, just for example, if you had this up, which you've been dealing with blight, but then we haven't really been ticketing people and then going to the next step and the next step yet. Do you know what I'm saying? So maybe we should try that process first and see how many or how many people would respond to a initial letter from you and then an initial letter from whatever the steps are. And see how far we can go before we do this. And just thinking of other actions than to go for a mileage. You know? And maybe a budget time, budget X amount to go for the, for the processes, see how far.
So just the rough math, let's say that I had to do, we did take all these thirty two to court at the twenty five hundred. It's eighty, eighty thousand just if we, if they were twenty five hundred dollars a case. Some of them I don't, I mean, some of them I've had success on having them clean up with just a letter.
Well, that's what men of the officer, that's, I mean, maybe.
I'd like to say something.
Did that more, you know?
How much time do you spend on this? Or how much time could you spend on this?
I spend, I would say between blight and assessing issues, I spend probably at least a third of my time doing that. And then take into consideration, it's not as simple as just sending them a letter. I need to go visit each of the addresses. So you're talking about mileage for all of that. And then just the time of being out of the office to do that. So you guys would see in my reports that usually I've been trying to do that on Wednesdays. Sometimes it's quick, sometimes it's not. Sometimes I visit a couple that are grouped together. But I think if you wanted somebody to just focus on that full time, then you're talking about that being a full time job for a short amount of time, maybe. I don't know that it would, I don't know how that would go.
But it's not gonna stop meantime, that's fine, like we're looking at today, but.
But if we hire a full time person.
I've been on the board.
With benefits and everything. There's not going to be any money left after we pay them for legal fees. Right, and I don't know what that looks like as far as, like liability because you're out doing something. I know that my liability is higher. It will be higher because they're out in the field.
Right.
That will be higher.
I've been on this board twelve years and blight has always been we don't have enough money, we don't have the time, it's been handled, but blight is becoming a bigger issue, it seems like all the time. I just think we need to address it and go after it, get it cleaned up in our township. If we don't do anything about it.
I get that. I just don't know if this is the answer, though. Maybe looking at other options.
You're proposing a half a mil?
Half a mil. But any, anything is better than nothing at this point, right?
I'm just against having another mileage on the ballot when we're trying to get the fire mileage passed. I don't think it's going to help us at all.
I think true.
I think fire, the fire department is a higher priority. I'm not saying that blight isn't important. It is very important, but I think our fire department is a higher priority.
We got a question.
Not normally.
You could come at the second public comment if you wanted to.
Okay.
Blight is out there. If you choose just to continue our path, you'll get people coming in complaining all the time, so let's wait it. We've done nothing, and I thought this might be an avenue to get something started. It's not going to cost a lot of money. I think our citizens might look at this as something they may look at, ignoring talking two years. We don't do anything in two years. You're not gonna renew it.
Yeah, I guess my concern would be at a, on a, on an assessed value of a home roughly a hundred thousand, a half a mil would be what?
Fifty bucks?
Fifty dollars, maybe, something like that, twenty five to fifty dollars.
Maybe not that much.
Yeah, I'm trying to think how that would.
No, because our one mil is only like, what? Seventy?
Yeah, so it'd be somewhere in that thirty five bucks range, and I would just wonder how many people would just take the opinion that it doesn't bother me, so I'm gonna go no on that. I think if you had a, if you were gonna try to run a mileage, I would think something less than a half would be, would be, would make more sense. Something that is far more palatable, it still collects, sounds like plenty of money. If you go for over a two year period, still have two hundred and some thousand dollars. I don't think it's realistic to hire someone to do specifically blight stuff because I don't think you'd keep somebody busy enough doing that. I just think that there has to be who, whose, whoever duty that is has to be that duty, that they're paid to do that, they ought to do it. But I think that the money would be used for litigation purposes and not for payroll purposes.
Any more discussion?
Well, there's a motion, some motion from the committee, so it's so it's at least two of three that came here.
Oh, yeah, I mean, maybe lower than that.
Lowering it to four?
Four, point four maybe, or whatever.
Four.
I mean, quarter.
Instead of point five. Oh, I see what you mean.
Yeah. Point four instead of point five?
Yeah, that's, is that what you're saying?
Sure.
So I guess what is your motion?
Well, we'd have to come up with the language that Tim would have to approve and so on, but.
Yeah, I think it would be at this stage directing the township attorney to draft proposal, if being a resolution.
That will come to the next meeting.
And you wouldn't make a final decision until you adopt that resolution that includes file language that you're comfortable with.
So it'd be, so the motion would correct, your motion is to direct the township attorney to write a resolution.
With point four million.
Was it a ordinance?
I mean, the committee decided point five, but, you know.
The resolution that would state township board, we hereby direct the township clerk to place, take all the steps necessary to place the following ballot proposal on the August twenty twenty six.
What's the timeline for that?
Into the spring, like for that resolution.
Yeah.
Of May first or something like that.
Yep.
So trustee Reiner, do you move the motion?
And this is just a draft line we tried.
Yeah.
Not proving anything, we're just.
Are we talking about a half a mil then or a quarter of a mil? We have point four. What's point four?
I don't have the, really, so when I think about it, whoa, whoa.
Our decimals confusing, yeah. Russ, go ahead. Okay.
Well, the committee decided point five, so I don't know that I have the individual authority to, because this comes from the committee, not from me.
Well, if it's just gonna be a resolution, why don't we just move with the resolution and we can alter the resolution once we get it.
Less than half a mil.
I can leave a blank.
Yeah.
But I have everything in there, okay, ballot wording.
So you have the motion to direct the township attorney to draft a resolution. We have no support yet.
I'll support it.
Is there any other discussion? Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clark Flavich, no. Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Corral.
Yes.
Supervisor Kozibowski.
No. I'm carried. Okay.
Good. That says the second opportunity for public comment. If anybody online has public comment, please click on the the lips and raise your hand. Thing none. Is there anybody in the audience with public comment who's a portion of you?
Just a couple things. So as far as the blight, I don't think two years is long enough. Some of those blight cases go on for years and years. Years and years, so just, you know, something to consider. As far as the, um, rezone. You know, and I, I understand that some of these are questions, you know, that you don't have to answer, but I'm just wondering if everyone actually went out to the property to take a look at. At it before you considered the case today. Also, I'll be curious to see, you know, what types of trees can actually grow in a sawbowl muck. So, you know, that's interesting to me that, um, you can get tr- trees to grow there. So, I, I disagree with your interpretation of the rezoning standards, I think there are a couple of those, which I noted in my letter. That, um, are not met, but that's my opinion, you do have the, the right to rezone. Even if they don't meet those standards, um, I think by rezoning this agricultural, you, and even though. Wetlands aren't part of the rezoning standards, you've now made it easier for him to fill and drain those wetlands, which is what you would have to do. In order to plant that many trees in that area. Also, you know, I. Why have a zoning ordinance? My husband and I can come in, I guess, and. Apply to rezone our property to agricultural, so we can get whatever tax benefit or grant benefit there is to that. Why can't any of the neighbors now? It just doesn't make any sense to me, it wasn't the intent of this rezoning standard. Um, also, I wanted to correct an inaccuracy, um, from the applicant, um, we do have a legal. Deeded easement from Lakeview. I did send him the, uh, a picture of the paperwork, but I, you know, it was inaccurate, so I just wanted to make sure that was corrected. So, um, that's it, I'm really disappointed in your decision, obviously you know that, but, um. I, there's nothing I can do about it at this point, thank you.
Is there any others?
Tom Hilberg, twelve oh five Trowbridge, um. I'm a, a- absolutely a proponent of, uh, uh, blight and, uh, um, but I don't think thirty, I think thirty two is way on the low side. Cuz I've been riding around looking for hunting property and.
Just reported to.
Okay, reported, okay, okay. Okay, that's just, you know, I've, I've been riding around looking for, for hunting and stuff like that, and. You know, some people have their original, the first car they ever, ever owned there, so, but. I'm, I'm a proponent of, I'll vote for it, but I don't know if, I don't know if it'll pass, also in regards to the zoning, um. The, I liked, uh, Tim covered it more completely than we did at, uh, at the, uh, planning commission meeting, I'm the chairman of planning commission. And, uh, you know, and in our defense, I guess, uh, we, I don't know. If I've ever, I've done rezones, but not. The conditionals like this, and we didn't go point for point for point like. And I, I do, uh, um. I do like. Tim, when Tim retires, he should get on his own board or something like that. Yeah, and we were, we were, uh, in our defense again, we were thinking it, you know, it's allowed in that zone, so why? You know, why is it, I guess, you know, it, it just came into our mind, why is it that big of a deal? Cuz it's already allowed, we're not really, uh. And we, we didn't feel, we also didn't feel like, uh, Mr. Lappin said that the financial considerations were our, our problem and the. And the wetlands part of it, that's not really our problem either, because if you're, we, I can't. I worked for M dot for thirty years and what? Somebody thinks is a wetland and what I think is a wetland. Lot of times we're not the same, and so that's not our problem, that's what I looked at, that's what, why we can't. Can't say, well, that's a wetland, you can't do that, cuz we don't have that expertise, so, um. But thank you for breaking it down point by point, um, I don't, uh, uh. I am not, uh, you know, offended at all by that, I, uh, probably shouldn't called you in a lot earlier and. We had you at the meeting and helped us out with that, so, um. Go for the blight, I'm for it, but I don't know if the. I don't know if it's gonna make it, and I'm for the fire department too, but, you know, I vote, I vote, work for the state of Michigan and. My wife was a teacher, so we vote probably yes for every, uh, mileage, so, so, thank you very much.
Other? Public comment? Um, any other discussion? Let me go to the township. I've just got a couple of quick things, I promise. Um, Laura, to update you on the Omega status, the Ballard lights are scheduled to be replaced on November third. And, or Steve, um. We did meet with Lenny.
Good.
Um, the conversation. Was not steered towards grants so much as I thought it would be. Um, so I think that we will probably need to have another conversation with him, uh, but we did meet with him and ended up being, um. Michelle and Laura and I, meeting with him, uh, the chief was there briefly and then the conversation turned to also. He saw himself up. That's all I have. Anybody else?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll favor returning, signify by saying aye. All right, meeting adjourned at. Eighteen sixteen.